All right, good evening, everybody. I like to call this special school board meeting. That's GFW Middle Elementary School or School District two three sixty five. Start with the pledge of allegiance. All right. We have a few. Items to review tonight, so we'll start with a motion for all the agenda items. All in favor? So Kelly, the first thing we're going to talk about, or Dr. Smith, is the resolution authorizing Associate Bay for construction fund expenses and authorizing board. Here clerk and treasurer signatories.
Yeah, thanks. This came up. Rather recently. Right now, up to now, we've been using the Fairbanks Bank as our depository and and they've been paying all bills for the construction. And. Just for some background, when when we have money in the bank, banks are. Required to have collateral to back up the funds that we have in the bank. Well, we're starting to run a lot of money through through the local bank and they they were. Struggling to keep necessary collateral, so they called us and said. What are our options? And well, option one is they could. Reach out and try to bump up their collateral. Right now they have two million dollars in collateral. But we're going to have payments approaching eight million dollars when we get. High season this summer when we were doing outdoor work and inside. And they just didn't feel they could get to that level. So the other option was to go to PMA who does our investment proceeds and say. And we started checking account out of. Those investment proceeds and so essentially we're that's going to be collateral collateralized all the time. So that's what this motion is doing. They are not an official bank for us, so the resolution is. Authorizing them for this account that will expire at the end of when when a construction fund proceeds are. Fully expense. This account will close. We continue to do our payroll and our normal business through our local bank here. But they are just not able to meet the collateral required for the size as you're starting. Starting to get it back right now, this month, we're we're sending out checks in in bunches. So they don't all get cash the same day. So we can, we're trying to manage it that way. I forget Julie isn't three million dollars this month, like close to four, get close to four. So and they're just going up from this point on, so. So that's what the resolution is. They just need. And it's through Associated Bank, who is the bank that PMA works with. They needed a resolution by the board and then a new signature document. Chair Miller has that document up here for our treasurer clerk and chair to sign. And then also in the resolution, it says that superintendent and finance CFO, finance director would have authority to make transactions. For his wires in and out of that account. So we know that we have adequate funding in there to pay the pay the checks or pay the invoices.
And so soon they associated. Has the collateral, right? And where's their location at?
They're they're all over the Midwest.
Okay.
Yeah.
What is there? What are we giving as collateral?
So they have to. They have to have like. CDs, whatever, equalling whatever we have in their account at the time, so they're covered. So we don't have, we're not responsible to get the. It's the bank's responsibility and Associated Bank was just a larger player. Who has higher limits than our smaller local bank.
In the company for about a year?
Yeah. So we have construction expected to be. Nearly done January, but there's going to be money at least of June of next year. As we have punch lists and we have retained each funds that we will have on hand. And to me, it's always amazing how. Seventy five thousand doesn't mean much to me. I got you when you're trying to get him to come back and finish the last punch list item, so. It's going to go till at least June of next year.
And that's what was asked for the retainage and the.
Yeah, yeah. The account would close when funds are all expensive.
So how do you transfer this amount of money so quickly to Associated?
So PMA, that's a partner bank with them, so they wire. Yeah, and Lindsay picks up the phone and says, we need to move eight million tomorrow because we've got. Checks going out for construction.
And all other finances will still go through our home company.
Yes, correct. And I just want to emphasize, we've had numerous conversations with with the bank. They're the ones who brought it to our attention that. It would be more and more difficult for them to collateralize to that level. So it is something they're well aware of and supported.
This is something they have to prove on a monthly basis, the collateral that they have, you know, because we've obviously been running bigger checks through already, right?
Right, right. So they had added collateral, but they. I had sent them a tentative drawdown schedule and so they saw the size of things and that's when they got nervous that they were.
So we just need a bigger background.
Yep, yep.
And sorry, I apologize. We are just adding Associated pay Associated bank. That's not our current.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Yep, yes, we're not changing who we deal with and all other things, just adding Associated Bank and only for this construction.
If you run our contract through the past lawyer.
I did not, it was just opening a bank account and. I guess I've done this before with PMA on another building project where we just. Roll the checks right out of that investment account, so. No.
Are we gonna have to revise this one? Lindsay and you weren't out there.
Well. You will have to do maybe a different signatory if officers change and. Yeah, I don't know if they'll ask us to do another resolution when we have change in superintendent. I'm not sure if they'll ask for an additional one or not. We just wanted to make sure that. So we had that authority to do.
But it should be a pretty simple process to.
Once we're in there, yeah.
Yeah, because it's already been approved. The council already there is take out people that can. Communicate with them.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure if they're going to ask the board to do another resolution, but that's might might be where they have to do.
Sure.
Change the names.
Certainly done. And the county attorney. Just to check it out.
We'll put it on our.
Thanks, Julie.
Member, are you any questions on that? No, I'm just wondering what, after we've drawn it down, vast majority in the last six months or something like that, we transfer it back? Is there any need to do that? Good question. So.
Say that again, so when we get to a certain level, when there's some left, but not spending millions a month.
Correct.
Yeah, then it then I would say you you could ask. The bank locally here, are you able to handle? Whatever's, you know, you're spending a hundred, hundred fifty thousand a month. They could probably good with it. So, yeah, you could. Probably bring it back before you lose the construction.
Anything else?
Good questions.
Remember turtle? Oh, good. Hey, well, I'll just read the resolution and then we'll do a roll call. All right, whereas the GFW School District seeks a financial institution to handle construction expense transactions on a regular and ongoing basis. Whereas the GFW School District already has a contractual relationship with Minnesota Trust for the investment of school district construction proceeds. Whereas the GFW School District seeks. Anticipates seeks anticipates that monthly expense transactions will exceed collateral levels secured by its other financial institution partners. Therefore, let it be resolved that effective Monday, April seventh, two thousand twenty five, the GFW School District entered a partnership with the Associated Bank through Minnesota Trust. To secure construction fund checking account privileges. And be it further resolved that board officers, Russell Miller Chair, Amy Acre, Treasurer, and Emily Stare Clerk be authorized as signatories for this account. And be it further resolved that CFO Lindsay Heine and Superintendent Kelly Smith have authority to initiate transactions from this account. May I get a motion to approve opening a. Account with the Associated Bank?
I'll make a motion to approve that opening of the account.
Hold second.
We got girls on the second.
Erdol.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Avery. Yes. Stair.
Yes.
Girlsome?
Yes.
Freeze.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. And we will move on then. We'll have to sign some paperwork. Okay. Next, we want to review the budget assumptions for twenty five, twenty six.
For five. Kind of five, six, and seven, we're going to kind of cover same time if I can, if I can find it.
We're reviewing it and approving that.
Is there something I would want to just put this if we're not approving it, why we went to put this on the work session versus the regular meeting?
Because originally I thought we would maybe be approving one of these items. And then I thought it would be more better if it was just presented as information to come back later or. For final approval. Also, I know these meetings are. I guess more available for the public to review this conversation and I thought this was important, so I could then see as well. So, yes, I want to discuss a couple of things with regard to next year's budget, just some budget assumptions. We've talked before about. You know, as you start developing a budget, you've got to start with some basic assumptions about your school district. We'll cover a few of those. And then we'll take a look at projected revenue based on some of those assumptions. And then we'll look at some reduction options. That are that are available to us. And just a little bit of an overview. Essentially, school boards are required to prior to July first have an approved budget in place. And no funds can be expended by a school board or any district unless that budget has been approved. And obviously, that would be an unlawful expenditure. I have seen some districts through the years have present a budget of one dollar for revenue and one dollar expense. Technically, they've met the intent of the law. They haven't told their public anything about the way the school district is operating. And then they've revised it later as they had more information, but. We are going to try to present a little bit better. Budget than that. So when we're developing the new budget, things to consider, what are your district policies and guidelines? You know, we have a twelve percent fund balance policy. That's probably the biggest thing. We have kind of general, I won't say they're official guidelines, but class size. Issues. Program offerings, things like that, that would be district policies and procedures. What's your projected enrollment? That's the biggest question for. For a future budget is how many students are we expecting to walk through the door on day one? What kind of cost increases? What's going to happen with negotiations, special ed costs and quantification costs, et cetera? And I want to back up and say, we're really talking general fund tonight. So we're not going to talk community ad, food service, any of those budgets. What are your facility and equipment needs? Here. Equipment might be Chromebooks. Are we in a position where we was, we need to? Kind of reestablish a a turnover. Process for those Chromebooks, so we keep keep them in good shape. What kind of staff changes are you going to have? And then. The budget we approve is going to be what's there to deal with negotiations. We have contracts up this year. With our teachers and our our local two eighty four and our principals group, so. Lot of negotiations going to happen this coming year. And then finally legislative changes, what will the impacts be in the future? And I'll talk a little bit about that as we move. Go forward here. So legislative changes that may impact our future budget. Unemployment insurance aid. If people recall, the legislature put a two-year pot of money out there to help districts pay for the cost with the unemployment aid where. Pair professionals and part-time staff were able to collect unemployment over the summer. There's. That pot of money is running out. There's been a proposal to add. Additional funds to to cover estimated fiscal twenty six summer term costs. If that proposal does not go through, that's going to have an impact on our budget because we know we're going to have some expenses. Special ed transportation aid has been proposed to reduce for to ninety five percent in twenty six and then down to ninety. Ninety percent in twenty seven. I don't have the total dollar amount impact. But we. I believe we put in a hundred and twenty five thousand aisles for specialized transportation last year, so we we have some costs in that area. Alternative teacher compensation, also known as QCOM. The governor's proposal has. Recommended eliminating that program in twenty seven, so not next year. But GFW is a QCOM district that will impact us if that happens. Literacy incentivate. Not so much a financial. Change there. Compensatory hold harmless is a big one for us. We're scheduled to lose a hundred and thirty nine thousand in compensatory revenue this year. There has been a proposal at the legislature to hold districts harmless this year while they make some adjustments to that. That reduction is coming to us as a direct result of some of it is our declining enrollment, but a bigger piece is. We have fewer kids that are showing up on free and reduced meal applications because we no longer do the paper applications. And we're just getting what is certified through the county. I mean, we usually know there are more families out there that would qualify than are going through the county.
So can't do that piece anymore or?
And through the paper, yeah, they don't really recognize that. They just go off of. What is at the county or the direct certification they called.
So that it has to be applied for a different county.
Yes.
You're not doing that.
Right. And so one of the proposals was to bring back the paper options, which. No districts like that because you. Just it was like pulling teeth, getting those forms back, but. There's real money behind. So that's a proposal that's out there. And then one that doesn't directly impact us, but a little bit. Is non-public pupil education aid and non-public transportation aid. So this proposal is to eliminate that. That aid and therefore our obligation to transport non-public school students, so. And that's, I can't remember forty forty thousand dollars for us, thirty. Forty forty thousand roughly.
A bunch, you go back. So at the top. So. Once the unemployment runs out. That the state is providing right now, right?
Yes.
Does any dollars come out of our district? To help fund that as well, so it's just supplemental that the states.
Right, so our employees all have the right to file for unemployment if they're not employed in the summer. We get that bill right now. There's funding at the state to help cover that bill, but when that runs out, it's on our dime.
And it's good through the summary, huh?
What's? They're saying that they believe it'll last to the end of this year, but. They're they're looking to add money to it to make sure we make it through this summer.
Okay. And if we added that into our. Well, you're starting the budget now, so.
Starting, yeah, so that's one of the things that's out there that we don't know, and I'll tell you right now, we're going to assume that they're not going to have that. So they're dealing with a budget.
All this is. Okay, so then the special ed. So you said a hundred and what thousand, it should be transportation costs.
So so we had a hundred, roughly a hundred and twenty five thousand miles, I can't tell you, I I forget what the dollar amount was for special ed transportation, but. Pretty significant amount of our. Out of it. Which is about a third of our overall transportation budget.
So they're, so they reimburse us for all of it?
We, yes.
And now.
Now they're going to cut it down.
For ninety five percent of the ninety percent in twenty seven.
Yep, yep.
Okay. And then. The alternative teacher compensation. So. Does the state fund that fully right now?
Yes. There there's actually a state aid component and a local levy component, and I believe right now GFW has just been utilizing the state aid.
And we don't know those, but we can find out those dollars for future talks, right?
Yep, okay. Yeah, and again, it's proposed. For for not the coming year, but twenty seven. Okay.
Literacy incentive aid, that's just how they're. Allocation, so how.
Right, yeah, right now they use the results of the MCA tests to determine how much aid you qualify for, and they're looking at changing that. Instead, using that poverty data, which is down in compensatory. Don't know if that's going to impact us positively or negatively, it's just a change.
And what's an example of a non-public people transportation that we currently do that the?
All every every student who attends PLS that we pick up on our regular routes. We're getting aid that goes into our transportation fund essentially and paid up for part of our transportation.
Are there always this many headwinds going in? For the school year or is this? I don't feel.
I would say. I would say it's per. Pretty much a typical number, but I think they're more significant impact on districts because they're trying to address a budget deficit where the last. Number of years, they've been giving districts more money when the proposals were out.
So it's a statewide public school issue. Everybody's right going to deal with these factors.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you for.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. So some assumptions and I mentioned FFLRP committee, you know, and. Before we approve the final budget, we'll actually ask the board to approve this set of assumptions, so. So there's agreement and consensus around the table that. Okay, here's the best information we have today to to develop our budget for next year because we just went through a whole page of things. That are out there that could impact us. We don't know where what the state of them will be. So enrollment is certainly the key. Right now, we're estimating five thirty five. For kindergarten through grade twelve, so that's five hundred ninety one. Adjusted pupil units, that's a drop of about fifteen to twenty adjusted pupil units. Now, I'm. The good news is, I shared with FFLRP earlier today, our. Our enrollment went up eight this past month, April, we're at six forty. Six forty one, and that's pre K through grade twelve, so I'm sorry, I don't have that broken down right now, but. But in the K through twelve, it went up eight students, so. Which is good, good news, good news, yeah, yep. And so we were at six. What, six twenty six to start the year and we're at six forty one, so we're actually increased by fifteen, pre K through grade twelve, so that's good news. We're we're not going the other way. Capital expenditures in the budget, we've set aside a hundred thousand dollars for basically miscellaneous as we move into a new facility. We have. Lots of money for furniture and tech and other things. But it seems like. In my past experience, it's always something that comes up that. We're looking for money for, so we're planning on about a hundred thousand. For out of our camp, operating capital for that. Special ed expenses will increase by five percent. That frankly is a fairly conservative number. Special ed costs have been rising rather rapidly. Anybody's guess right now what that's going to be, we're projecting five percent. One thing we think we do know is state aid per pupil unit is going to increase by two point seven four percent next year. That was announced by the Department of Ed. And we don't believe the legislature is going to touch that. That would be. A tough call for them to take away that money that that has already been announced. And then two percent for the next school you were looking at. Um, and then two percent for the next school you were looking at. Tech expenses, fifty thousand salary and benefits, we mentioned negotiations, three to five percent per year. Total package. Uh, reductions of approximately three hundred and fifty thousand. Transportation costs will increase by five percent. Um. I should have put eight and ten together, bus purchases or not. Um, I just sent out RFPs for transportation services for next year. That are due back May eighth. Um. And I'm pretty sure we'll have proposals whether they make. Sense for us to go that direction or not. Um. If we go that direction, transportation costs may increase by more than five percent, but we wouldn't have to deal with bus purchase. So there's there's a trade-off there. Curriculum updates and subscriptions, we would cap at fifty thousand dollars, again, our, we're we're no longer buying many textbooks. It's all subscriptions for for online curriculum. And then two things that are going to come into play, um. Minnesota Paid Family Leave Act effective January first, so midway through next year. Um, school districts will need to start paying a payroll tax of point eight-eight percent. And uh. It would be our recommendation that that be split between the school district and the employees, so. Um, our share would be point four-four percent. And then TRA, Teachers Retirement Association, there was a mandated increase. Of the district contribution from eight point seven five percent up to nine and a half percent. And that for us is roughly thirty-five thousand dollars, it's gonna add to our bottom line, so. So anyway, those are the assumptions. That we have today. Uh, they they could change slightly before we ask for approval, but that's kind of where we're starting from. And in particular, that enrollment piece was used for rep-revenue projections, so this document shows. Where we were in twenty-three, twenty-four, are audited, what we have for a revised budget for this current year. Um, ten million nine ninety-seven, and then what we, it should save. Twenty-five, twenty-six proposed budget, I'm sorry. Um, we're projecting a total of ten million seven seventy-two, so about two hundred and twenty thousand dollar. Drop in revenue. So where did that drop come from? Uh, we have some more local property tax levy, and that's from. Um, we're finally done correcting an LTFM issue that we had, first we added money to LTFM. And state took it away when we didn't need it because of the new building. And then now it's bumping back up to a normal level, so. Biggest change in our levy from last year was that LTFM aid. Uh, miscellaneous county revenue, not a big change, um. Just drop, we're estimating seventeen thousand less there, interest on investments. Just a conservative estimate that. Uh, estimate there of eighty-five thousand. Or or no change from this current year, state of Minnesota was dropped three hundred six thousand dollars. Um, the biggest. Two factors in that are fewer students for next year and our general ed formula allowance. And then also the compensatory, we're right now we're projected to lose a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Federal government, we have a drop of sixty-five thousand, um, again. The uh, some of that change is we had some leftover federal grant dollars that ran into this current year. Twenty-five to thirty thousand, that is gonna be gone. Um, and then we have some other slight decreases based on enrollment as well in that area. Um, just another caveat, people ask all the time, where what's the federal shutdown of Department of Ed? Or pending shutdown going to do to us, we have no idea. Um. Our hope is that the money keeps flowing, uh, that it comes out of some other department, but um. Well, nobody knows in the education community right now. Whoops, so um, there's our projected revenue for next year. Any questions?
Well, we discussed this. At length. For quite a while already, yeah, um.
Yeah, it shouldn't be a surprise.
Nothing's changed since we we last.
Right, 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 yep, so. Just that, yeah, we were almost eleven million, and now we're gonna be ten million seven seventy. So down to twenty-five.
And that's on a. Conservative uh, student.
Yeah, that's that's always a big one, yeah, yeah, so uh, we try to be conservative there in hopes that uh. We're gonna see more heroes come through that front door on an opening day, yeah. All right, um, and then. So. We're currently have a slight deficit budget and uh, we have less revenue coming in. So um. The odds are we're we're going to have to reduce some things to try to. I don't know if this would even make it a balanced budget. But minimize the level of of a deficit that we have, so. These are some options, again, nothing is, nothing is certainly decided. Um, but one special ed teacher, we had a resignation in our special ed department and actually. Couple of couple of resignations and one retirement. Uh, we won't be replacing one of those physicians, um, we'll spread their duties around. Um, and there's a savings for that. We currently contract with CISO for HR. Um. Duties and uh, services. Um. That contract right now is about sixty thousand dollars a year. Um, the recommendation is to reduce that by forty thousand. And we would still keep a portion of work that they do for for. Uh, benefit management, um, health insurance, all our other employee benefits, which are getting more and more complicated. All the time, so did not totally reduce that, recommend reducing that. But uh, recommend cutting it back.
So. Is what they do is they assist in signing up for benefits or they research benefits?
Uh, yes, kind of bold here, but primarily um, just making sure that. Uh, ev- everybody goes through the enrollment process, they have that set up. Um, I know they're meeting with our insurance consultant on the vision and dental benefit. Is that are still out there, um. Um, they've also done for us. Um. This year, you know, they've assisted with posting of positions in all the sites, uh, working with uh. The Office of Teacher Licensing or PELSBY uh, in getting outer field placement. For for teachers as we have needed and couldn't fill positions, so they've done some other things this year, they're. Internally in discussions, we feel we can take over ourselves. But that employee benefits piece is. That's not. Any of our expertise, um. And so we're looking to hang on to somebody to do that as well.
So for the twenty grand that we're not paying them to do something. How's that line defined? So, but. We're still giving you forty thousand dollars a year.
So we're gonna save forty thousand, or. Yeah, we're, this is what we're gonna reduce the contract by, yeah, sorry, that's confusing, these are.
Still gonna be twenty thousand.
So we're gonna still, currently contract is sixty, I'm recommending you reduce it by forty thousand dollars.
Oh, so down to twenty thousand?
Twenty, and they'll just be responsible for that. Employee benefit.
And the other forty thousand dollars worth of work is picked up by.
Mr. Berg, Jacobson, and.
And what kind of work is that? Um, job postings, um, I'm just trying to think of.
Frontline, frontline, that's the observation management system, where we have our. All of our staff are. Um, listed in the system, so when we do evaluations, all of their data over a period of time, as long as they're an employee here. Will be in that system, um, and so someone is typically one person that manages. That if it's not in the HR, um, and. They have to make sure that everything in there is updated every year, system needs to be closed out, finalized, it will go over for the next year. So it's. Yeah.
So these are these observations that you've been sitting in on and doing action on of a couple of them. Week or two or whatever, it just documenting it?
Yeah, so like, for example, a non-tenured teacher. Has three per year by an administrator of a state law, and so those three that I would do or Jennifer would do live in there. And then those who are tenured staff members, they have an evaluation every three years, and so those live in there over time too. So any anybody who's had evaluation here at GFW, um. Would be in that system.
You think that's the biggest uh, ticket I have?
Well, and then also under there is our absence.
Oh, that's right, yeah, and um. One more thing. Uh, uh, absence management, but then also the postings, yeah, yeah. So there's like different categories within that system also. So, but yes.
Correct. Thank you.
Is that very time consuming? Is that gonna take a lot of your time?
Yes, no matter who does it, it's gonna be a a lot of time.
And correct me if I'm wrong, principals, but I think CISO's role has really been helping. Familiarize everyone with that system more than, you know, they are not out doing the observations and now you are taking them over. You're already doing that, it's it's more managing that system than everything is.
And we used to do all the postings here, um. You know, when we had a a job, and I mean, it kind of fits with what you're doing, and I mean, you know, you have an opening. And you're following it through, so.
It's just that someone has to be on top of like the postings because. There's certain like two week periods of like on EdPost, then they disappear, like if you don't repost. I mean, they can be in on our website, but people aren't searching. Hey, what jobs are open at GFW if they live in Wisconsin or they live, you know, in neighboring states, or they go to EdPost saying. I'm gonna type in elementary teacher, or I'm gonna type in, you know, high school teacher, and then they populate in there. Well, that's not kept up every two weeks, then it doesn't populate, right? So it's just kind of one of those things, it's a lot of upkeep, but I mean, it's not impossible, it's just. Extra little things, um, also the evaluation system this year is required by the state. Um, worth a teacher development plan. And so we have, school districts have to have a new evaluation system with specific requirements put into that. Sorry, the elevation system this year is gonna have to be revamped, we're gonna have to look at that. So that'll also basically be our rubrics that we use when we do our evaluations are gonna need to be changed. So someone who uh, manages that frontline system has to change the rubric, so they're in charge of uploading. The rubrics and making sure that everything plays nice together in the system. So.
Would be fair to say that. That would fall under a business manager's role. If it wasn't through a third party like this or not.
Some sometimes, I mean, depends on. Sometimes uh.
We don't have one, that's just a question, no.
A lot, a lot of. Most times, HR is quite different than the business manager. It's just so specific on insurance and stuff, and that's typically someone else's duties. Job postings or something like that, yeah, if you had extra time as a businessman, you could be doing that.
Yeah.
Makes you feel better, I've lived in the frontline system, I've lived in old school paper and a file system, I've lived in the Google Drive system. And I've lived in the I observe system, so. That's the experience, so. Recommendation from Dr. Smith.
Um. Next on the list, Sibley County Family Facilitator, um. We have time from a family facilitator who comes to our district and meets with families that. Have needs of one sort or the other. Um, we actually have another individual who does similar work out of the greater Minnesota family.
Yeah.
Sure, sure, yeah, um, so we're eliminating one essentially, um, and this contract, which is more most expensive. More expensive to us. Than the other contract.
We have.
Right now, there's two individuals that do similar work, right?
They're from different.
Different entities, yeah. Um, subscriptions, uh, just trying to. Uh, Wade and Ryan have done a great job going through all the various subscriptions we have, and what are we actually utilizing? Um, and what? What aren't we utilizing, and what what can we do away with, we expect we're gonna have some savings there of twenty thousand dollars.
How many subscriptions do we have?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot, you know, you think of. Every curriculum area, you know, in some cases, um, urology subscription, uh. I mean, it's a long list, it's a long list, but but that. The point of that whole exercise, yeah. What are we actually using? And it's providing value to the district versus what did we pay for thinking we were gonna do something with it and it just hasn't materialized, so.
And I would assume within that, if there were subscriptions where it was kind of an all the cart option. Really looked at, this is a piece that we use, we can cut this back as well.
Yes, exactly, and uh. Principals mentioned frontline management system, there is kind of an all the card system, and they keep trying to throw one extra service on there for an extra. Six grand a year that we haven't used and don't plan to use, but there was on the invoice for renewal for it, so. Just trying to. Get rid of unused and underutilized subscriptions.
May I, Doctor?
Yeah.
And a lot of the subscriptions that we use, we did some research and things that you would not necessarily think a subscription is tied to. There's all, we have subscriptions, or even for livestock judging. Uh, there's subscriptions that that go along with that department, and part of the tech department is. We we are required to know what digital subscriptions we have across the board, so we pretty much went department, department, department. And found anything that has any sort of digital subscription to it.
Well, that's.
The document might blind you if you looked at it.
So we did an audit on our internally, and we're coming up with. Twenty thousand of.
Yes, and and some things are annual, some some are on three years, some are on five years, some are on six, seven year contracts. Uh, so you gotta take all of that into play, break it down, what is it per year? Uh, what are we signed on for, have to see through, can we get out of certain ones? But Doctor Smith analyzed all that. Did a good job, take it good.
So are there some that could fall off when they run out? Possibly.
Very possible.
Okay. So we've got some.
Mr. Jacobson and I made some recommendations that. What what we would probably do. Left it to his discretion, yeah, but.
And. Um, so who? Who bought all these subscriptions, like already was, I think I know the answer. Um, just for a long-term vision and it's just.
Some of them have. Been through just the department situation that the departments are in.
Yeah.
Those people have oftentimes filled out purchase orders and had the secretaries fill those out to fulfill something like livestock judging. So things like that would fly somewhat under the radar until we did this deep dive. A lot of the other subscriptions, multi-multi-year subscriptions. And. That can go back. Always.
Yeah, well, so we're cleaning house on it, and uh, it should be a license here to manage, now the house is clean.
Some some things are just at some cost at this point, right?
Yeah, it's, yeah.
And so now really just being more intentional and thoughtful about what are we purchasing? And then also, since you guys, the board approved our curriculum, that's really what our teacher should be using, because that's what the board approved. And so if we channel our teaching through what was approved and or approved, you know, by the principals. Um, we shouldn't need to do additional subscriptions.
And when we approve a curriculum, are we giving permission to buy subscriptions required?
Yeah, so like when we presented on the subscriptions.
This is part of the cost that I already. This is part of the cost that I already provided.
Yeah, yeah, and then actually um correct me if I'm wrong, but I I think both of our curriculums that um. What did we do? We did math and what was. Yeah, um so we. We looked at are there um interventions built into that. Curriculum from the company that we could use, so we don't have to buy additional things. So for example, this year um I discovered and worked with. Doctor Kelly in regards to, we had a a reading and a math intervention that we had at our site. That was quite expensive, but then when we purchased our math curriculum, there was an intervention system that was. Purchased within that curriculum, and so there was no need for us to pay the additional cost for the other intervention. So currently, right now, we're using just the reading intervention um and got rid of the math piece. And then we also have a smaller intervention for our site built into the curriculum that that we purchased and. I think you do too, the end class as well, but sometimes that intervention only is suitable for. A certain developmental stage, so that's why we kept the upper. One separate from curriculum that we had purchased for the reading, if that makes sense. So trying to make small adjustments that way if we can.
Yep, no, I follow that, but so is there any penalties for? Say we bought a um subscription, it was a, let's just call it like a three year subscription and we, after one year said. This is not for us, it's not working, are you able to cancel it? Are you able to get your money back or?
Sometimes. We had an example of. Some technology that was purchased on faulty year contract and uh. Um they would not allow us to totally cancel the contract, but we were able to. Cancel six thousand dollars worth of it. But we had to keep, I think, three pieces of equipment for three thousand for the remainder of this year and then we're gonna cut the rest of it, so. Um because we, there had been a contract signed, they they at least let us out of our. And that varies by vendor. Somewhere. Some are okay, other, most have some kind of hook like that where they don't let you just terminate it after one year if you've got two years.
So how does something like your example happen if a curriculum's approved? You buy the software, then also when it comes up, you need the add-on to judge livestock. And then that just gets blown under the radar. How's that add-on become a thing if you already bought the curriculum?
They. It's not part of the curriculum, it's just a digital license.
Okay.
So in order to use the online platform.
Okay.
You have to have, let's say you have twenty kids.
It's got nothing to do with the curriculum that's.
No, it's just digital, digital licenses, so there's difference between the two.
Which means the kids couldn't learn it or go and do it without the digital license.
And so for. Like, our digital licenses are different at the the secondary level, more specifically in the nine twelve, because we have elective courses. So um so. For us, like, we have a six-year subscription for some of our core courses and, you know, like, E L A, science, math, whatever. Also, social studies curriculum, we purchased that, right? So that's the curriculum that that we have been um using um. But our elective courses, we don't run them every year and we don't run them like in the same semester. So that's where the cost will change slightly every year, depending on the courses that we're offering for students. So then I have to go through and I have to make sure that we have this, the the right amount and number of licenses. For our students registering for those courses, so I can also purchase them ahead of time, which I wouldn't want to do because in that way, sure how many kids are gonna meet in those courses. Um so it's kind of like. We anticipate based off of how many you had the last time, and then we. Hope we have around the same amount, so kind of know how much we're probably gonna need the next time that class like rolls around. Sometimes numbers are drastically different, like you might have ten and one year and you might have. Twenty-two, twenty-five the next year, so it just, it depends, but that's how the license runs, you have your core classes, but then for us. It's every year we have to look at the courses we're offering and then buy a certain number of licenses in order to run those courses. Getting kind of long here, but specifically to those licensors um is our syllabus, so. We can't ask teachers to build a syllabus using a particular curriculum and then buy another curriculum and then ask them to do that again, so then we have inconsistencies. With our teaching and our learning strategies, so we're really trying to have the teachers be involved in the process of like. What curriculums do you like and want um and it's approved by the board, so that's why it's important for our teachers to follow also what we do, so that it's. Streamlined, if that makes sense.
It it does, so. Now we're all conscious about it, so. Everybody knows we gotta watch it, so.
It, you know, it's it's just a function of the changing way our curriculum is offered. I mean, it used to be we had a curriculum review cycle and you'd buy. Language arts textbooks one year and then math textbook the next and you just go on. Well, now it's online stuff, and so.
And with virtual options, that's more.
Right, yeah.
And we're trying to offer more.
Yeah.
College credit classes, so that's part of this.
Yeah, uh because credit, since we just, well, the junior classes here specifically for E L A. Um we'll need to look at purchasing something in the future because they were new and they were decided after we had. Gone through the whole. Curriculum purchasing for the E L A, um because we had a candidate that was able to teach that, so. Then because we had that candidate, we could offer those college courses, so, yeah.
You have to.
Yeah.
Um other things on the list, uh teaching and learning coordinator, this this year um. We have had two teaching and learning coordinators in the district, uh primarily middle school, high school. Uh building is where they have worked um. They've done very good work and been uh. Done important work, but um. It's it's just a financial commitment, but uh I don't think we're able to make it this time. Um so 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 it's eliminating one. Um and then um. Finance director, I have a negative number here, so.
Is there a reason why we're only eliminating one?
Yeah, um. Well, frankly, because I think there's still plenty of work to do, um but also um. I think there's gonna be additional work as we transition to one facility next year. And um I mean, it's very likely that that other position could be, would be looked at again. Next year, this time as a a reduction um.
Because they're two-year contracts.
Right, but they are, they are at-will employees, so they have a two-year contract, but. We are able to turn, they be like a probationary teacher, we could terminate them at any any time, but. Um I just. Um that's been part of my dilemma throughout this whole process about making recommendations, we. We have a, I think, a a great opportunity staring us in the face next year as we transition into a building and. I wanna make sure there are. Adequate staff to make that transition successful and that includes. Working on curriculum and everything that goes with that. But just getting into the building and making sure everything works works together and I gotta talk about that on one of these later ones as well.
Like the role of moving into one building, because if you're. That's an expensive one body. To keep, so if you're looking at adding a body, couldn't you? Put it in a different position, such as. Special ed teacher or?
What do you mean adding the body? I'm not sure. These are all reductions.
Yep, so, but if you were to, but what you're saying is that when we move into the building.
I would say. I would say, yeah, and then after next year, you would look at, do do you. Are you going to hang on to that one remaining teaching and learning coordinator or should that position be?
Yep, so are you going into detail on a later slide of when we move into one building, why that because that particular position is necessary?
I don't, I don't have any information, it's uh. On any future slide um and at at this point, it's just. My my gut feeling that um. Well, I'm gonna back up. Balancing a budget is the easiest thing in the world to do. Just give me a pen, a red pen, and I'll balance the budget. But. While that's. Part of my job, bigger part of my job is trying to provide an adequate. Education system to all of our students. And I, I just feel that in this transition year, there's just gonna be enough miscellaneous things. Uh along with the basic duties of a teaching and learning coordinator, which has been. Um you know, supporting our new teachers, working with staff on curriculum. Um supporting our international teachers, along with all of those things. There's gonna be just a bunch of other things coming at people as we as we make it move. Um and I want that move to be successful. And get everybody in there and be comfortable, and then there's gonna be additional items of district. So that's why it's my recommendation to to leave one in place now, make one reduction.
Right, I wish, I mean, yeah. And there's other things we could probably go to the box on two to help.
Yes, as well. People have other ideas, that's fine.
Uh this is Jacobson. I think you and I talked about teaching their corner, but can you, there's a lot that they do. Can you explain to everybody exactly that role?
Um well, yes, there is a lot that they do, and specifically like what Doctor Smith said. Um working with our new teachers, which is in general supporting teachers and then the systems that we put in place. So um basically, there. The two that we have now are really assigned to specific teachers and departments and um while I do across the board, I also um support. Other teachers as well, so for example, one um works more with the science and um the choir and the band. Um the other works in the math department and also with our C T E staff, right? Um and so they're in the classrooms on a daily basis. Um they sit down and work with the teachers and their planning, their preparation. There are another eye in the classroom going, oh, that ain't right, they gotta, we gotta, we gotta address that, so let's sit down and have a conversation about. How we might fix that, right, and help them problem solve, um even things as simple as making the phone call to a parent. Um it's a, it's a true real fear, you think it'd be something that's very simple, but they really need a lot of support. I'm just in the, you know, the simple tasks in which we would assume the teacher would maybe just do. Um and then also they take part in our student services team. Um our attendance team, so we look at attendance, um we look at truancy. Um they help then communicate on our student academic tracker about failing students. They communicate with those teachers, making sure that they're communicating with parents on a regular basis, so I mean, it's just. Yeah, they're they're really doing a lot um during the day to support um all of our students. Um in in making sure that they're getting the best education that we can. The biggest thing um is. The access, right? I am not accessible all the time, nor is Jennifer, just because of what our jobs are. And so I think that, like what Kelly said, um moving into one building. I really need to have that kind of support um because it's the immediate feedback. That prompts change, right? Um the immediate support. That helps them come back the next day and wanna continue to come back to G F W in the following year, right? So um right now, we're trying to figure out how do we keep our teachers and build our teachers and. They don't make it there to the, before the three years, I mean, it's not something that's probably surprising to them, right? It's, they've been supported and had conversations. Over the time in which they're there, so, yes, they do um multitude of things and one of them does is is working with Wade to transition to our district assessment coordinator. Which is a huge task in itself, um. Most districts, uh that person is staying, not it, so um yeah.
So. What was this role formerly known as?
For that, yeah.
What what was the title? What was, I like.
We didn't have them. We didn't have them.
Yeah, okay.
And so we were, so, well, I, we had conversations about how we needed um more support for our teachers, but ultimately it came from. The teachers themselves saying that our new teachers needed support. Um and that we just had a lot of new teachers and there was a lot of turnover and so um. That was why they were kind of putting places to help support our new teachers. Help build climate and culture in our school district because there was a divide between the new teachers and veteran teachers and so. You know, trying to just make things a little bit more smooth and making sure that everyone had the most support that they could possibly have. During the school day and really is the access for that support.
Didn't G F W have coaches before?
That would have been one of them, yeah.
Yeah, we did have coaches, we had coaches through the um grant, um we've had them for about six years. Through two different literacy grants that we received, um but those grants did run out this last year, so there was no more funding for those coaches.
Yeah, and theirs was a little bit different because it was more specifically to reading, ours are just. Now in general to teaching and good teaching strategies and just general management of the classroom, um because. Um if a kid isn't having, or kids aren't having a good experience in that class, it um, you know, has a trickle effect, right? So um. Whether they would take that class again or if they're in the middle grades, um okay, fine, I'm going to a new school or whatever the case may be. So.
And this role to facilitate the relationship between. New teachers and existing teachers and the coaching that goes along with it, doesn't fall under. A superintendent or it could is that divided up? It's maybe some of its principal responsibility, maybe someone superintendent, maybe probably not business manager, so it's too business managing.
Yeah.
I I'm just asking a lot of questions.
Yeah, no, um. So for example, like um. I am working with one of our teaching and learning coordinators and. And and have been with um one particular teacher, and so we have the entire um two months. Um well, we started in March, but March, April and May, this is, this is what we need to accomplish before the end of the school year. And mapping out exactly what that teacher is going to do from. March until the day that our students leave, right? And then every week um we're both checking in, but we also have a sit-down conversation in regards to what's. Gonna be happening in that classroom and how we're supporting that teacher, ensuring the time management and. All the things that go along, making sure our kids are learning is happening, right? So um that's where the teaching and learning coordinator come really is crucial to that is. You know, I might be doing some more of the coaching in this particular area, um just because of. The need level, right? But then she's a reoccurring of what needs to happen in the classroom.
So you're both doing this for one teacher?
Yeah, sometimes, yes, but it's it's only in this particular case, I'm just saying that that's what. A teaching and learning coordinator would do. Is would do something like that, is help them map out the rest of the year, what lessons are you teaching, you have the resources that you need, ensuring that. What they say is happening is happening in the classroom. Sometimes. The principal has to be involved in those conversations.
So the one that you have on there, what are the two things that they will receive? Is it the C T E person or is it the? Can't remember what you said, they both did.
Uh, well, they have all of a lot of different things, but um we've divided up the teachers so that the teachers are trying, they are giving as much equal support. From the individuals as possible, so like our um one is doing um the math department and the C T E. And then um the other one is doing um the science and then also um the band and choir. Um and then I helped do some of the others.
So which one that's being reduced? The one that's being reduced is covering which areas, I think, is the question.
Oh, you mean the one coach, oh, it's it's the, it's the math and the C T E.
And the whole, whoever, the person that's left, they would take it all on them.
Yes, or it would be divided.
Divided, yeah.
I mean, if a school district, okay, so I was an instructional a a a coach and for G F W too, and so. In the state of Minnesota, all the instructional coaches, depending on their program, and you're meeting with them weekly, um twelve to sixteen. Um teachers is a pretty full load if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing. Um, and so the teaching and learning coordinators also help them with their their peer coaching, so. Hey, my peer, my peer coach or one of my peers is coming in to observe me twice a year, right, we talked about that. So um, they can have conversations with them about, okay, like, what are you doing, and let's talk about like what you want to do and. This really helps them with their their skills and their confidence um in their classroom.
Sounds like a lot of duplication, am I correct in that?
Uh, duplication in terms of.
You have a teacher, learning coordinator and a peer observing one teacher, are they not doing the same work?
No, um, I will say that we've gotten. Because the QCOM is is more so with teachers, like the teacher union. Um, having teacher leadership roles and then part of the QCOM requirement um. Is that they have to observe their peers, right, but that's not part of necessarily. The support that they get, they're basically being evaluated by their peers twice a year and are having a conversation. About what they saw in their classroom, it's not ongoing mentor support of how do we truly? Like, take a look at our planning and are we aligning? Um, our instruction with our standards and how do we do that, they do that maybe. In their post conversation once a semester. So we don't really have any control over that part, but we have. The piece of the mentorship that is ongoing support on a daily basis for our instructional, that's what our instructional coaches do. Our specific training for instructional coaches and our instructional colleges are doing that and um. It's it's important.
We certainly, if we have to drill, I don't know, but yeah, yeah, it's a, that's a good description, thank you very much.
I'm just to finish out the items on here, uh, under finance director, I have a negative number. Uh, finance director, business manager, probably going to cost more next year. Um, we currently have a contract for fifty thousand. Uh, with Lindsay, Lindsay to continue in that role, um. She's frankly able to do that on a fairly limited number of hours because of her knowledge of this district. And uh, I think it's gonna take more. Uh, I will be asking three different companies to give us proposals for two days of service as a finance director, so. We'll see where that goes, um. I put on here departures versus replacements, I said we had some resignations, retirements. We have one other verbal resi- retirement, but have not received a letter yet. And typically, you're hiring back at a lesser cost than the person who is leaving, as they're typically toward the top of the salary schedule. They have a savings of fifteen thousand, I think that's conservative in there. Um, another one that would impact a staff member is to move our AI coordinator position back into the classroom. And then just pay a stipend to continue to do some of that work outside of a normal teaching day. Um, that would. Kind of create a little bumping pattern throughout um. Throughout a department, um, but it's basically would be a reduction of one position there. And then last thing I have is just miscellaneous, um. We're looking every day for areas that we can uh make reductions, um. To be to be more efficient as we move forward, so that total on this list is three hundred fifty two thousand one hundred. Um, and if, and if people have suggestions, additions, whatever, um. Certainly open to those, we're not acting on any of this tonight, it's for informational purposes only.
Are there any technology grants out there? That we can get?
Well, that's an easy first answer, yes, that we can get, that's, I I don't know, I.
Have we ever had one?
Energy grant specifically for certain.
For technology.
Well, we had the AI grant this year, going twenty five dollars about this.
And yeah, and we reached back out to ask, you know, I would, I reached back out to them to ask if um. The grant would be available in the future, and they said, no, the grants are typically for school districts for startup purposes. Um, with the the thought that they need something to get started, but. They will eventually be able to do it on their own, so that's why they will do the grant again. As it was more for a startup purpose, for starting a new school, wasn't that?
Yeah, for the, for the, yeah, for that position, yeah, specifically.
There, there's all kinds of grants that could pertain to all different avenues. Attack, if there's something specific that you really wanted to research and go after. Once again, it's it's going through the process of the grant or the stipulations of the grant.
Yeah. I know sometimes they put some heavy stipulations on those.
And just the time involved in even writing the grant is is pretty great, a lot of times to even have a chance of getting it. So um, you know, there's. I'm all for grants, I I enjoy writing them and, but it's very time consuming process, and then usually there's a lot of grant management throughout the process. Also, that is um required if you do get the grant, so.
You answer back to them and make sure you're spending it on.
Exactly, yeah.
Um, what is the one that you applied for, and I can't remember the name of it, the big one? That's.
That's, yeah.
What does that cover?
Um, yeah, it covers a lot of, a portion of a lot of salaries that we have there, it covers our um SEL coordinators. That we have, um, our reading interventionists throughout the district, our math interventionists throughout the district. Um, our cultural liaisons, um. Let's see, yours. Um, no, it's mostly Monday. We guys are constantly, um, yes, serves all of our students, so.
And you tried that, oh, like in May?
Well.
Actually, we heard we are, we hope to hear mid-April.
Mid-April.
We would get some word that we might hear that a little earlier, so we're hopeful.
We aren't assuming that we have that when we're looking at our budget, correct?
Um, so if we. Actually, this is kind of assuming we're going to get them.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we, if we don't get that, we'll probably have to look at some additional things added to this.
How much is it?
I could it come to?
Yeah, I, I can't remember.
Well, and then just really the other thing with that is that um. Their support staff, right, so those, the support staff, like Kelly had mentioned before, is like. When you make changes, it's a trickle effect, right, so then you're. And someone from here and they're going there, and then that person's going there, and then that person's going there, right? Um, which is the interventionist because they are the classroom teachers and so. Seniority takes precedence over that.
But yeah, we we do hope to hear that in April, which would be good news and kind of way I think. In the event you want to have, right? Don't forget that. All right, that's, that's all I had for now, again, it's uh for discussion, and just wanted people to be aware of kind of where we're starting and. What what assumptions you were starting with.
Yeah, uh, sorry for interruption, she did find a total of seven hundred and twenty thousand.
Seven two zero?
Yes.
Did you? Did you have that there were total expenditures are?
I did not.
Oh, okay, just wrapping.
Just wrapping. We will, we will bring that forward as we get that. More fully developed.
Well, the cure all is more students.
Not sure, a big piece of it, okay, yep, um.
Yeah, down to number eight, now, anybody, do we have any more questions on it? We'll obviously discuss uh more others down the road. Um. So number eight, approve elimination of valedictorian, salutatorian replaced with Latin honors. Um. Maybe you want to just spend, you have in the past, but I don't know if it's in a public meeting or.
Yeah, yep, um, and I was trying to. Just have a hard time when I get this on this screen here, um. So the discussion was we've cur- historically, GFW has had um. Had valedictorian and salutatorian and um. And the recommendation is to eliminate valedictorian and salutatorian, try to share the screen, um. Um, and and replace it just with these Latin honors, um. Kumla di, magna cum laude, and summa cum laude, um. It's it's just getting more and more difficult to define. Where did an A come from, where did a four point O come from, did it come from southwest, south central, river, river community college, whatever? Um, or did they take it internally and what class was it, et cetera? Um, this way, if you make this move, we. We eliminate that competition to be the very top student, but there's still a competition to. To achieve hopefully summa cum laude, um, so we already have this in our registration. Guide, so this is what our students are used to seeing, so this would be the recommendation. That we just eliminate valedictorian and salutatorian and recognize students based on. These grade point averages, so cum laude is three point two to three point four four nine. Magna is three point four five to three point seven four nine, and then summa cum laude, three point seven five to four.
And yeah, we've talked, this is a trend, um. It's, everybody probably will be this fairly quickly, it's too easy, but I believe your grade point average, if you've already uh, you know. Been a good student through your junior year, you don't have much classes to take, you can take some very simple classes to really boost your GPA, um, the. See one of those two honors, so.
So that is, that's the recommendation, and I I did ask Principal Jacobson after the meeting of the last time when we discussed this, we had some of our students who are. Probably begin impacted by this. If she had any feedback, negative or positive, and I guess it was pretty quiet, um. So I, but we, I wanted it done at this meeting, if that's the wish of the board, just so it's out there. Couple of months before graduation, so waiting till the last minute, yeah. Um.
Any scholars attached to valedictorians, but.
Not for, not for us, no, um, some schools um might ask if you are or were. Um, one of the two, um, but. Not any that I'm aware of, um, they typically ask if you're in what percentage of the class? And and this is similar to what percentage of. Or whatever of your class, and or if you've received any awards or whatever the case may be. Um, maybe some of the top prestigious schools, maybe, um. I I I'm not aware of that.
They're they're smart enough to know that that can be altered that.
Usually, they, yeah, usually they then go towards like the ACT, um, SAT scores. That the students are scoring in those particular areas of those tests.
Stay on a scholarship way, but do we think it's fair to end it this year?
Right.
With the school year almost over, if there is somebody that has their sights set on it for the last twelve years?
Yeah.
Versus starting fresh next twenty twenty five, twenty six full year?
Well, that's where the, that that's where the. We, we, the last time I checked, we currently had four fourteen kids that were within a hundredth of. A percentage point um above a four point O, four point one, like, and. In the past, it's been toward unwritten rule that those students that take PSEO. Um, courses are not considered as a valedictorian or um salutatorian, um. Because that's been the incentive to take courses at GFW.
Sure.
So are those fourteen not like PSEO?
They are, so some of them are, that's my point here is that.
So the system's flawed already, yeah, so it's, yeah, so it's, it is better to switch it now and give everybody.
Yeah.
Uh, this recognition instead of.
Yes.
One of two.
Yes, because we have had. Lots of problems and arguments and issues within our office over. The last second. Great that comes in and we're really, we're now focusing on this. You know, hundreds of a point for the students, right? But then also our PSEO students who have been taking college courses then aren't configured in that and then are. You know, I mean, not in the running for it, right, so.
When by rights they should.
Yes.
Should be, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody got any other questions about it? True?
Nope, overdue, let's get her done.
Well, it's important stuff, so, um, okay, well, then.
Is there anyone that's gonna be super disappointed if we both go away?
Well, nobody's brought that to my attention, and what we did bring it up at our last board meeting, that was five and our students.
So it's we're here.
Yeah, and I've had conversations in um our building with our student services coordinator, um Stacy Wood, who deals with all of the. You know, odd transcripts and um colleges and she agrees. Um, this is a good idea for us to move to the system as well.
Well done, can I get a motion to approve elimination of valedic- valedictorian, salutatorian, replace with Latin honors? Oh, like, approve it, a second?
I'll second.
On favor? Done deal? Um, next up, approve twenty twenty five, twenty six calendar.
Yeah, and uh, so I have that on the screen as well, and we can get this onto our website if it's approved tonight, it's. It's what we talked about at our last meeting, just a little bit uh more presentable, um, um. Design here, so um essentially following our. Calendar as we have no extended spring break next year because it's not a uh band choir trip year. Um, and when we have kind of the odd moving days that uh will allow staff some time to. Um, finish and move into their rooms when they are ready, um, so some days are before school starts and then some are in December. Before the transition for middle school, high school. And then the last thing that changes, I believe we had nine early releases that this current calendar and the down to five. So, um, and the last caveat is just. Um, this is all assuming our project is on schedule and I'm getting reassured by Rose Anderson that we're we're in good shape for what we're planning.
Definitely, we've looked at this several times too, so, um, anybody got any questions on before we? Uh, can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty five, twenty six calendar, I made a motion to approve it, a second? Stare, on favor? Passes. Thank you for participating, everybody, um, good conversation, good uh clarifications, um, much needed, so. Uh, can I get a motion adjourned, let's see. Thank you, Morgan. Second? All favor? Meeting is adjourned, thank you.